Howdy, everybody. Today is Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, and the time is 5:32 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Capella City Council. We do have a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We are convening into executive session in the first-floor conference room. At the end of the executive session, I will come out and announce work session, at which time the public is invited and encouraged to join us. Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. The time is 6:32 PM, and we have adjourned from executive session, and we'll be moving into work session in the first-floor conference room. The public is invited and encouraged to join us. Thank you. All right, everybody. The time is 6:34. We're going to move into work session. We have four items on the agenda. I've been asked to move item C up one item, so we're going to do the discussion on the agenda items first, and then move into the redundancy contract discussion. Did anybody have anything on the agenda to ask or question tonight?
I did. I did.
You said that so excitedly.
I did. I did.
We found my note to self.
He gets us. You get a chance to speak.
Thank you, sir. I had a question about consent agenda B, C, and D, and E.
Mr. Garza, those are all yours.
Oh, good.
Jim?
Yes, sir.
Have at it.
Okay. Thank. Oh, okay. Well, just turn around so we can hear my conversation. Okay, so on B, the approval of CJ Designs' contract, the rendering looks like the rails just be kind of screwed into the top of the sidewalk or the curb closest to the curb. But the contractor's quotes says a charging is to remove four to five inches of the concrete ground.
It's not going to be screwed. That's just a rendering, and I'll go through that. I have a presentation as one of the items.
Oh.
For the session. I'll go. I'll kind of go through that, but they're not screwing it on to the sidewalk. There is going to be a cutout for them to, because the foundation. It'll be a mini foundation for the railing.
Okay, so because I suppose they removed four to five inches of the sidewalk, it's going to be pretty tight, right?
It is going to be tight. There's it's a, but it's a six-and-a-half-foot sidewalk, and so we expect about four-and-a-half, five feet for the main to be able to further.
Well, if he's going to do a presentation, I'm content just to see if he answers my question in advance. I didn't mean to. That might be a little more efficient.
Well, it's actually consent agenda, so you need to.
He has a presentation.
At D.
Yeah, D is.
Oh, 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 okay.
That's the reason we're smiling.
Jim, you're, you've got that presence.
Yeah, so.
Or present.
I've got.
Or present.
I've got. So should I go ahead and ask about C and D then?
Sure.
Okay. So I just want to make sure I understood. So the, in C, Dallas County's paying $51,840 in total cost with the $103,680 for the entire flashing yellow light improvement project. That is the subject of D, right?
Correct.
Okay. So the reference to reimbursement from Dallas County means that when we approve D, we're going to fund the entirety of it, the $103,680, and then we're submitting the $51,840 for reimbursement.
Correct.
Okay. Is there any timing requirement when Dallas County is going to reimburse us?
As soon as the project's done, we submit, file paperwork, file affidavit, and file invoice, and then they submit the check.
You're pretty good about that?
They are, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm surprised, but that's good. Was it City? Oh, okay. So with respect to that major capital improvement program, we applied for the yellow light project in 2021. Is that still ongoing, or were we eligible for to submit any other improvement projects?
This is, we probably, we submitted, I believe, four or five projects with that program. Yeah, five projects. We've done one already, which was the intersection improvements along Dent Tap, and they paid us about $480,000 of that project. Flashing yellow arrows, autonomous vehicles, and.
It's okay.
Yeah, there was, there were five projects that. So there's still probably a couple that you may see in the future.
Awesome. Okay, that's great work. Okay. And then E? Can I ask about E? Okay. So we're, we're supporting the resolution or being asked to support the resolution so that ultimately if Dart's application to Tech Stop under that transportation set aside program is successful, then we'll only pay $250,000 of the total cost of the trails project, right?
That's correct.
Because that $250,000 are max, no matter for that section of the trail. If, yes. Unless there's, yes, for the trail itself, yes. Okay, so even if they run up the tab beyond what was originally anticipated, we're still only tagging our 2014-ish series bonds for 250?
Right.
All right, that's good work, Mike. Okay. I'm in good shape. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have a question about item G, the budget.
Item D?
No, G is in your.
Oh, I'm sorry, G.
The last is in.
Kim?
G is in budget.
Thank you. You must spell about as well as I do.
Hey, keyboard ruined me.
We are increasing the budget by $8.2 million, and the memo states that we are collecting more sales tax revenue than we anticipated, or even we approved the budget.
For the general fund?
Yeah.
Correct.
So did the expenses increase? Is that why we need to bring in this additional revenue, uh, income to the general budget?
No, it's because we budget. We budgeted it as the rule is in effect, and we always budget it as if the rule is in effect. And then each year, we come back to you, and because the rule hasn't been implemented, we are collecting sales tax as we always have. And so we come to you and show you that we're still collecting more than, because the rule hasn't been into effect.
That's right. So my understanding was the excessive sales tax that we collect, we'd put it in a separate bucket?
So that happens at the end of the year. I have to show it as a revenue when we collect it for financial reporting purposes. Generally, accepted accounting principles require me to do that. And then at the end of the year, what happens is anything, your total revenues that exceed your expenditures go into fund balance, and then it either is in undetonated or it's in any of the assigned buckets per the fund balance policy.
I understand. So we approved $74.4 million as the budget, and we are amending to $82.6.
For revenues.
Right. So my question is, when we approved the budget, we knew the incomes, revenue, and the expense that we are going to spend. Because we are getting additional sales tax revenue, are we increasing the expenditure as well?
We're not increasing the expenditures because we're receiving more money, more sales tax. We're increasing expenditures because of actions that council has approved that were outlined in the memo. So council has taken actions that have basically, you have assigned fund balance, for example, the Dart project. We had an assigned fund balance for the Dart project for a little over a million dollars, and then on May 27, council approved that project. So now what I need to do is, it's not budgeted. It sits in assigned fund balance. The budget is only for revenues and expenditures. So now, when council said, we're approving this project, I now have to come back and say, okay, I'm going to amend my expenditures. By amending the expenditures, it's going to reduce the fund balance.
Okay, so.
Okay. So the whole purpose of this amendment, as far as expenditures, is to get council's actions to be incorporated into the budget ordinance. And that's the main purpose of this. Plus, you have the encumbrance carryovers that we have every year, which are POs that remained open at 9:30 of 24, that the system automatically brings those over into the new year and brings over the budget. Because you've committed, we've issued the POs, we have committed to those vendors, that we are making those purchases. They just, the good or service wasn't received.
Okay.
Okay?
So going forward, I would like to see, when we approve something, was not budgeted, saying, hey, we don't have this budgeted. We need to bring money from the sales tax revenue to spend on this.
So that is, that would not be the language that I would use. The language that we, that we use in the fiscal impact is that this item is from, we either say it's budgeted in the general fund or budgeted in whichever fund, or we say this will come from general fund, assigned fund balance.
We do tell.
So that, that is, if it's coming from fund balance because it hasn't been budgeted, the fiscal impact statement on the agenda item says it's coming from assigned fund balance, or it will tell you that it's coming from fund balance. If it's a project that's not something that we've listed and assigned, we're going to let you know that, too.
Okay.
I, I think that I will be more clear. It may help if I start letting you know, this is not a budgeted item and an expenditure. It's being funded through your assigned fund balance. That might help you?
That might help, yes. Because I was not sure about that one million dollar that you just talked about.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. So I can make that clarifying language in the impact, fiscal impact, if that will help you, that this is not a budgeted expenditure. It's coming from assigned fund balance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. My comment was also on consider item E. And thank you, Tracy and Mike, for all the answers. And based on your answers, my understanding is for, for that fiscal year, the current budget was, let's say, the revenue was $74 million, and the total expenses were, well, I didn't add them up. But overall, it looks like the amended budget went up by almost $14 trillion. The revenues went up by 18.5. One second, let me go back to the numbers. So the revenue went up by 18.5, expenditures went up by 40 million, of which 90 million are encumbrance carryover, and the remaining 20.8 is from council actions, correct?
Correct. And each of the council actions are in your memo by fund?
Yes.
So, and when you approve those actions.
And because the expense relative to revenues is $21.5 million, that is coming from the reserve funds. The fund balance, sorry.
Assigned.
Assigned fund balance.
Yes. Thank you for the information. For, after the meeting, if you can kindly give me for the past five years, the encumbrance carryover, as well as the change in the fund balance, I just wanted to see the trend of that.
It, okay. We'll be happy to do that. It's not a trend, because encumbrances from year to year, it's completely dependent. So when you use the word trend, I just want to be really careful.
Got it, got it.
It is not a trend.
I just wanted to see what has been happening over the last five years. And encumbrance carryover is one concept that still puzzles me. I know that we have issued the PO on, like you said, September 30th, F24. But when we finalize this budget, is it done, like in August? Is that why we don't know that it's going to hit us?
Correct. So yes and no. I mean, yes and but, I guess. So we are doing the fiscal year '25 budget. The encumbrance carryovers have nothing to do with that budget process. The encumbrance carryovers were the fiscal year '24 budget, right? So those are, those are items that were included in the fiscal year '24 budget, where they could be council action items. For example, this crime control and prevention district, $600 and some thousand dollars of the encumbrance carryover for that fund is for the SRO vehicles. For the additional SROs that were added, we had to buy vehicles. So that PO was issued toward the end of the year. Those vehicles weren't received. We entered an agreement with that vendor to purchase those vehicles, so that that purchase order has to come over into the new fiscal year, because we're obligated. But the system brings, reduces that purchase orders in '24, increases the purchase orders in '25. It reduces the budget in '24.
Got it, okay.
And increases the budget in '25.
Got you.
Okay. So there's, there's, those are the situations that you're looking at. Fire trucks, we ordered, right? It's, there's a four-year lead time. You're going to see that encumbrance carryover for several years.
So we are adding 19 million to this cycle, but next year, if we had issues, if we had POs, let's say, for $15 million, and then that 15 million would be deducted from this budget?
I'm not interested in you. So are you saying if we had $15 million in POs that were open at the end of this fiscal year?
Yes.
Then this budget would be reduced by 50 million?
Thank you, thank you.
And then next year's budget would be increased by 50 million?
Thank you. That's what I was saying.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just one more.
Yeah. Just going back to my question about the amendment. I'm looking at your itemized list here. One of the item was legal, that we increased the changes by $248,846. Is that because we are, we approved to do the appeal process for the sales tax? Is that the reason why you ended up?
It's an encumbrance carryover. So you authorized us to spend money with the special council that is doing the rule, the work for us on the rule. So we issued a PO for the amount that they projected it was going to cost for the process, and that PO is coming over into the new year, because we haven't spent it all. The process is still ongoing.
No, no, no. What I'm talking about is the $8.2 million change that we are amending the budget to.
Okay, you said the legal line item.
Yeah, so one of the items, sixth on the line, is legal. We budgeted for $479,500.
And we are increasing it to 728, so that's a difference of 248.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
And that is what was remaining on the PO for special counsel at 9:30, because that process isn't over. So we issued a PO to that, to that attorney for the amount that council authorized for the rule, defense of the rule change, and what, we haven't paid them because they're still serving us.
Okay.
And so that PO came over so that we can continue with that engagement with them.
Okay, so to continue on that or advance my point, we are approving $250,000 today for the appeal process. Where will that be included?
Okay.
You've already approved it.
Yeah.
All you're doing here is recognizing that you previously approved it, thus the reason why this is an amendment. So you're approving all the changes that you've already previously approved into the budget document itself.
Right. So my question is, where is that 250 included?
I don't even, I don't understand your question either.
So we approved it a month ago or two months ago?
Uh, no, you, well, you approved it as part of the appeal process, right? So, so explain, help me understand the next question that you're asking. When you say, where is it?
I don't think it was two months ago. I think it was.
Last year.
It was last fiscal year.
So I think.
No, no, the appeal process, which is approved a month ago.
But, so it's in the general fund?
No, but that was not budgeted. The appeal process was not budgeted when we approved the budget last year.
Okay, now I'm understanding your question. Thank you. So from a budgetary standpoint, I'm trying to think how to best answer your question. It will come, but it will come at the close of the fiscal year September 30th, when you do the amendment to the overall budget for the year. Because this is as of September 30th. Of '24, with the encumbrances and everything. Does that make sense?
No.
Okay. So $248,000, whatever, at September 30th, was an open PO. Let's just say that you gave us the, because the appeal was filed in December, right?
Right.
So we talked about it in November, right?
Yes.
Okay. So now, that $240,000, you gave us authorization to go forward with it if we need it. That was point number one. So if those expenditures get made, September 30th, she closes out the year, and then the audit, if I remember right, the way the process works, when the audit comes forward in February, you do a close-out budget amendment. Is that when you do it?
I do it, I do it at the end of September. I close it out, so.
At the end of September, you'll see all the closing of this particular account.
So again.
So I, can I, sorry, I interject. I'm not going to amend for that $250,000 until I see that you need it. You've authorized it, but you have, you've authorized the 250, but we still have 238.
We haven't had to tap it.
So if you need to tap it in September, if I see that you're, that you've used up the 248, then you've authorized an additional 250, then I'll make the paperwork match that we're missing.
Okay, got it.
I'm not going to do that at this point, because you haven't demonstrated that we need it. We still have 248.
So we have 248 remaining in that pool. We can use it before we tap into the 250 that we already.
Correct. Yes.
And that will be included in your amendment in September?
At the end of the year, assuming that you need it.
Right.
I don't want to ask.
It's only if the expenditure is needed. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
All right. Can I ask a follow-up on the topic? First of all, which I'm sorry, I interrupted. I didn't understand. Your question very valid. Kim, his question triggered this question. When we approved that 250K, will it not go into the budget? How come you're holding on to it till September of this year?
Well, one is, it was, you gave author, you gave authorization to increase it, but it wasn't, we didn't, we didn't bring forward an agenda item specifically to a vendor. So all of the items, if you look at the memo, every item that took a council action, you authorized payment to a specific vendor, and we were issuing the PO right then.
Got it.
We are not issuing a PO to the attorney right now. That is, you've authorized us to expend that additional amount if needed.
Got it. So we verbally approved, but we haven't signed a contract?
No, no, yeah.
No, we have a contract.
There is a contract.
But it's not needed yet.
Right. For the, for the ongoing litigation, think of it as one contract, and they've been informing us as we've gone along what the next. And if you recall in that conversation, his statement was, if I remember, basically is, in essence, that was a fixed number. Because he said, based on their experience, based on everything that they've done filing the appeals, this will be our cap.
Right.
He felt very confident that that was going to. Yeah, that was going to be the number.
But the agenda item F is what we are authorizing today.
You are amending, you are recognizing an amendment to the budget for the things that you've previously approved, from an expenditure standpoint.
To clarify, you said F. Are you talking about G, because that's the?
No, the sales tax audit memo.
Okay.
The sales tax agreement for the council, it's what, is item F.
Yes, that's a difference.
I said G, but we are authorizing today.
Okay. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure I was following along.
Yeah.
So we're on a different one now? We've moved from a budget amendment to item F?
F, which is the previous one. And, you know, somebody said we are not authorizing, but we are.
I was talking about G.
Yeah.
We've been talking about G up until now. If you want to talk about any of the other items, yes, the council is authorizing expenditures on each one of those items.
I'm sorry for switching.
That's okay. We just have to make sure.
I didn't mean to interrupt. That's why I was, I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I was fast on with the G, yes.
I'm good.
Any other comments? All right, seen that. Let's move on.
You were the only one that had eye contact with me. Is there something you're looking?
I felt compelled to respond.
Kim, I'm offended. I was trying very hard, but you weren't looking down.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
All right.
I'll look at you next time.
We're going to, we're going to, technically, we're going to suspend the rules. We're going to take item C next. This is a discussion on the redundancy contract with Mr. Councilmember Hill.
Yeah, I just, after that last meeting that we had, for redundancy, did the presentation, redundancy, and I was just really taken aback by what I saw and the skewed perspective and biased approach that they had in their presentation. It was full of preconceived notions. It actually disturbed me so much that I woke up at 4 o'clock in the morning. Actually, I was angry and.
Did you see your business?
Yeah, I think you, I emailed you guys, right?
You did.
I did. So.
Yes, sir. You did. Yes, you did.
Yes, I did.
It was 4:03. It was 4:03.
So I was, I was a little disturbed to say the least. And, you know, I, what I saw here, especially after reading the six studies that we were provided with, you know, it was more of the same, see, recycled new urban, new urbanism recommendations that we received, you know, like 12 or 13 years ago. So, you know, increased residential density is contrary to kind of the fabric of Capella, and really changed the sense of our community. I mean, I don't know if you remember one statement, you know, there's, there was numbers quoted about how many people work outside the city, and because of that, we don't have an authentic civic identity. And I beg to differ with that. I mean, many of you guys work outside the city, and you know this is a close-knit community. So that kind of approach really is, is disturbing. And I don't think that we, we can allow the allure of promised revenue when we increase the density for redevelopment or future development of Capella. I think that the character of Capella should be the driver of decisions we make. There, there may be some commercial areas of the part of the city where you would want to increase that density to tap into some, some more revenue. But I think those spaces are few and far between. You know, it's, it's unfortunate that we're this far down the road, and I, you know, I didn't realize that we were, you know, three-quarters of the way into their contract. So I think turning back at this point, we can't do, but I think we have to control the process. at this point, uh, we can't do, but I think we have to control the, the process. They talked about bringing, um, four to six, uh, potential development concepts, uh, in detail to the staff for them to refine, refine the staff. I want us to be in on that, uh, refinement. And, um, I, I think it's, it's crucial that we get out in front of this, prior to any extensive development of this final study, so we don't have a repeat of, um, what occurred, um, you know, over ten years ago when we did the last comprehensive master plan. With that, I'll get off this soapbox.
Jim?
Yeah, I, I agree with Mark. You know, and I, I hope that at the end of the day, we're not paying a consultant a hundred and fifty-five grand to explain with a half acre footprint for a building, we'll get more revenue out of ten stories than we will out of two. I could've told him that for free. If you look at that one slide on initial observations, you know, they're saying that, well, you know, we don't have any high-density housing for the forty thousand people that work here to live, well, they've got us enveloped by a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar community to the north and a seven hundred and fifty thousand member community to the south. There's thousands of apartments within a five-mile radius of where we're sitting right now. So, you know, if, if someone is prone or desires to live in an apartment and wants to work in Capel, there's thousands of options. Uh, I don't think we need to feel any pressure to provide that here, and we do have some apartments here, uh, as it is. So, you know, I felt like the, the entire presentation was geared towards a kind of a preconceived or, or an inclination or preconceived bias to recommend high-density housing as an option for greater revenue. And I don't, I don't favor any kind of high-density housing, uh, I don't, I think it's inconsistent with really the jewel that we've developed. You know, when you look at that map with the seven hundred and fifty thousand south of us and the two hundred and fifty thousand north of us, and you compare just kind of the idyllic situation that we have and the fact that, you know, that this is just such a wonderful place to live, that's where our property values lie. That combined with the exemplary school district that we have and, and, you know, having said that, we're close to a hundred thousand dollars out on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar contract. I do think that their work could have quite a bit of value for us in terms of the data and the information that they provide. Uh, I'm less interested in the recommendations, given their bias towards high-density housing. I am interested in the data, but then some of it, now I'm even kind of a little bit credulous about because I, I, I really sat down and tried to think, okay, so I went to the Seven-Eleven at Beltline and didn't tap, there was one guy working there. I don't know how you get to another thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine people working in town. I, I'd love to know how they came to that number. So, you know, and it seems to be data that supports their conclusion. And anytime I see a consultant or an expert of any kind that is citing to data that then supports their conclusion, you know, you, sometimes that's the way it goes, and that it's a valid conclusion because it's solid data, but sometimes it's because they're using skewed data to get to the conclusion. And I don't know which is which here, but I, I would have an interest in kind of being a little bit more skeptical. So, I'm, I'm glad we're getting the data, there was a lot of the data that they provided in the presentation that I found to be interesting. I don't think we have a real current snapshot of the demographics and that sort of thing of our community, and I think it would be interesting to have current data and information to that effect. I do think it's relevant to the master plan that we're redeveloping. But, you know, I think if we were to announce that acting on their recommendations, we're gonna put a fifteen-story residential condo in Andy Brown West would be, uh, something less than popular. And I'll leave it at that. I don't think there's any appetite for that here, I don't think anybody wants it here. The problem is, I think their, their revenue conclusion is all wrong because, you know, generating more revenue theoretically out of one dense development, if it drives down the property values of all the rest of the residential that we have, then I don't know that on a net basis we've had any gain. So, there's a lot about the high-density conclusions and analysis they have that I disagree with and that I find somewhat, uh, curious at best. But I am in favor of continuing out the contract and getting the rest of the hard data, and my encouragement would be for them to focus on providing us as much hard data as possible, letting us, letting staff and then us work towards how we want to use that data in connection with how we take a look at our master plan going forward.
Bijan?
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, I'm trying to understand, you wanted to discuss this topic because, uh, the presentation? Or we, uh, approved this consultancy to study this matter, or what, I'm trying to understand.
Well, it had to do with the presentation and, um, to be quite honest, I was not aware that they were that far into the process. You know, I, I knew they had started, um, a, a while back, but my goal or my intention initially was to terminate the contract because I don't think they're gonna tell us anything we don't already know.
Okay. So, here we are, we're, we're into it, we need to finish it, but, you know, I think
like some of the suggestions that Jim made, that we just get that raw data, you know, and not let them make the conclusions and the recommendations. It is the better way to go.
So, um, follow-up question for you. Can send an email with a lot of details? Do you want those type of details upfront when the staff come and ask us, can you approve a hundred and fifty-four million dol, I mean, a hundred and fifty-four thousand for these type of consultancy?
Are you talking about the question that had been, um, multiple responses?
Yeah, can, can send us an email, right?
Yeah.
The details of what they have done. Do you want that upfront when we approve this project or consultancy?
I mean, I think that would be valuable information to, uh, that could be contained there. I don't know if, if they can accurately provide it. Maybe something that the data is fed to, um, our wonderful finance team to, uh, to look at what revenues actually generate.
Just, can I just? Other than the scope of services and examples of their other work, there's really no data they can produce because we haven't hired them to do anything.
They haven't done work there.
So, uh, I'm just responding to the, I think I heard your question, so. We can't go to our consultants in advance and say, hey, can you tell us what the finished product's going to be? Or what the, what the, what the data is going to be before they ever start the work? But we can't provide you, here's examples of their work, here's the scope of services which we provided, you know, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, not the final product, what I'm saying is more guidelines, right? You know, this is, was done in some other city. Here is a public document available from a different city, uh, these are the things they will be looking at. Not asking our consultant, but our staff is providing the council, hey, these are the things other cities have done, it's free of cost, we can download it from some other website, and here it is.
Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. I heard, heard some really great comments from Mark and, and, uh, Jim. When I looked at three or, I think I looked at four of the presentations, some of the facets that I liked were, was the landscape analysis that they do for each of the city. Over the next twenty years, they're projecting what our potential revenue could be and what our, uh, cost of operating the city, and they're able to tell at which year we, we might be upside down depending on the tax rate that we adopt. So I think those are, uh, good data for us to, to work with, as long as we make sure that the data is valid and it's not made up. I like the fact that they tell us the general fund, uh, per household value, which is a number I think we can, uh, use to, uh, run the city. And, uh, one of the things that I liked, um, if we do have a problem, and even if the solution they'll provide is bad, it, it's still a solution, we can, we could always reject that and only look at it if absolutely it's needed. But some of the solutions they have, like, uh, in the west side of our, of our city, if, if we lose those warehouses, for other cities, they've looked at whether H E B is better than a super target. Uh, th, those are, um, analysis that we could use for our economic development. So I think there's some value in moving forward with it, my recommendation is that we complete it.
Jim?
I was just gonna say, I mean, the impression I had was that it was a Pat presentation that he's probably given to another ten cities. In terms of the high-density value in relation to low-density value, I mean, that's, I mean, that's kind of an obvious thing, so I didn't, I didn't really see any value in that, but, um, and, and I don't, I mean, honestly, for me personally, I don't really care because I don't, I don't think there's any appetite for high-density here and I, I, I just, you know, I don't think it would be commensurate with what we've built, um, to date, but, um, yeah, I, I, I'm not afraid of getting the information and then letting staff take a look at it and evaluate it within the context of the, the comprehensive plan and then, you know, working with them, you know, based upon the data, and I think a lot of it would be interesting to have, for that reason, but I, I was a little put off by the preconceived conclusion, or at least what appeared to me to be that.
All right, so we've got, um, I think a consensus that we would like to see the data, I'm, that's what I'm hearing. Don?
Well, I guess I'll chime in, we're about done. I do, I would like to get the data, cause I'm, I'm a little bit more concerned about the commercial areas that we have had trouble sort of developing, like what, what are the options to potentially develop some of these commercial areas? So I would be in favor of the data, and it, it looks like from the S O W, it looks like we've got three workshops that we're gonna have with council to have, I guess, some of this discussion with them. We ought to be able to, even, I mean, during the process, not at the end even, uh, so we ought to be able to provide feedback to Mark's point, if there's certain feedback or certain focus.
So there's actually multiple things that are gonna be going on, and one of the things I was gonna propose is there's gonna be a series of citizen feedback sessions that are held as a part of the twenty forty review. We could ask Verdendi, Verdendity?
Verdunity.
Verdunity. To wait till after those citizens' feedback sessions are over, before they come back and give us the data. That way that they might be a little bit more attuned to what our citizens' desires are. Or we could ask them just to continue on and, and give us their raw data.
That's a separate study, right? That's.
Well, the, I'm, I'm sorry. Are you talking about the twenty forty?
Yeah.
It is, it's, it is, but it's.
The part of consultancy.
Yes, yes, that's correct. But it is, it's part of the twenty forty revamp or review.
Right, that's separate than here.
Yes, that's correct. So is there any appetite to get the data early, or I, I'm kind of in favor of waiting till after the citizens' reviews are done and letting, uh, Verdendity continue at that point? Any, any opinion?
If they could, if, if we have a certain lens we want them to look through, uh, cause the data is the data. I, theoretically, the data's neutral. But if we want them to look through, look through a certain lens at that data, then I think it's good to help define what that lens is, whether that means meeting with us or meeting with feedback from the twenty forty, uh, citizen input or what. We can craft them and then tell us, okay, well, based on this lens, what's the data saying? Cause I do think, I think we maybe need some help with some ideas for certain pieces, especially on the commercial side.
Well, I, I, I'm okay for ideas, I mean, those are great, I gotta, I'm, I'm on board with Mark though. I, I didn't wake up at four A M. like he did, but I, I was certainly troubled by the presentation as well. So, I'm, I, I'm, I am interested in seeing the data, I think that's a good call. Uh, it's just, do we want it sooner or after the citizens' review? I, after thinking about it, I, I'd let them use, to use your words, the, the lens.
I think it's fair for if, especially like in Mark and Jim's case, they need to know there's some strong opinions on council on some of this stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's fair.
And, and I don't think they, well, I don't, I don't know what they do.
Mayor, uh, our contact with Verdunity, does it allow us to ask them to wait till we have finished gathering the twenty forty feedback?
I do not know, Mindy?
I, I think we could ask them for that, yes.
So if I could just wait just for a second, not to slow this down. When we go through the refresh, other than that housing pillar and the commercial nodes, those are the only two pillars really that have a land use potential impact, if you will, uh, related to conceptually. And as we go through the citizens' feedback on those particular things, cause we're not doing the comp plan proper, you know, as far as that is concerned. I'm just not a hundred percent sure, I'm not, I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure how to have that conversation with our citizens since it's not a comp plan update per se. But there is the housing element and there is the commercial, you know, development component of it, so I just, when I, when I talked to you earlier, I was thinking about the comp plan, not the twenty forty, so that, I apologize if that, if that got confusing.
It was.
Okay, so I'll take responsibility for that. When I talked to the mayor earlier, when he put out the idea, it was in reference to the comp plan, not necessarily twenty forty. So I just, I don't wanna set y'all up for an expectation that I don't know that would be met through the twenty forty conversation. But it could be met through the comp plan update process, which is just even longer, right? In terms of, cause we haven't even, have we done the RFQ yet? No, we hadn't even done the RFQ yet, so that's gonna take a while. So, but if a pause were put. Yeah, it's pretty far out there, and if you put a pause on it, it's just gonna delay while they have a lot of the data and so forth. To your point earlier about the feedback with the council, I think that's where the real benefit could be because that's where you're talking about your lens, it's like, okay, look, we, we know we don't want high-density, so take that off the table, you know, as far as the scenario. We know we'd like to concentrate on what does redevelopment look in the commercial areas? And in time, I think, Jim, I mentioned to you in the conversation, um, when this first started, so don't quote me on this number, please, paper. But I think when the, uh, the sales tax, uh, first was announced in two thousand nineteen, two thousand nineteen, twenty, and doing an analysis, I think it was to replace the amount of sales tax that we could possibly lose, it would take four billion dollars of new value to generate the same revenue of the sales tax. So, there are ways to have development that's in the Bs. I don't know, based on what our folks are telling us on the west side of town, that, you know, based on the market, that there's, what, what's gonna drive that, because they know, based on our location, that the warehouses and everything are valuable to them, right? Now, that doesn't mean your land use plan doesn't set you up for some future development, for redevelopment, thus the question, what's the right for redevelopment? You know, this is why I, I, I think I said it to the mayor earlier, so sorry for getting on this a little bit. Fifty years ago, the forefathers of Capel, when the airport was built, said the sixty-five L D N became the magic line. Everything to the west of that was going to be these types of warehouses, logistics centers, and here we are fifty years later. So now if you can project, well, what does fifty years look like forward? That's where this data starts being helpful and it starts to inform you, okay, to your point, some of the data, like what are the trade-offs? Are there, are there trade-offs we're even willing to make? But that's in the land use decision, not in the data.
Right.
So, did that help a little bit in terms of timing? And again, I apologize, Mayor, I wasn't clear on the.
Did you say you wanna take out something from the report before they produce the final report? Or because you missed the reference of lens here?
But I, I think if I understand the contract right with what Verdunity is going to do, they're going to be before you and you're gonna have your opportunity. So, so I will tell you, we've already told them high-density is not something this community is going to support. So they knew that, and, and, and I believe in listening to the presentation, it was just, here's the difference. To your point, it's data. It wasn't an advocacy for building X over Y, it was just showing there's an economic difference, to your point. We, when I called Mark the next morning, I even said, U L I's been doing this a long time, the Urban Land Institute, they've been telling the same story. They've been telling the same story since the 1970s and 80s.
And Mike, even if he includes that as an option, we have the choice to reject it, right? So.
Yeah, but I defer that to y'all in terms of, at the end of the day. Because if you want him looking through certain lenses, not even spending time over there, that's where he's gonna receive that information and say, okay, great. We won't, that won't even be something we put on the table. Because it's not fitting with the character of whatever it is that you, that you have. So I'm, I'm, I don't mean to confuse, so I apologize if I did. But I don't know that going through the comp plan, the comp plan process is probably another 12 months, if not longer, from being completed. Verdunity is 75 to 80% through with all their data collection. Now it's a matter of getting with y'all. What does the summary report look like and everything along those lines? That information helps when you start thinking about redevelopment purposes or anything. At least you have the data. The community and you have the data to look at. So while it could have value, but, you know, waiting till the end, but maybe there's something we do at the end. It's like, okay, now that we've made these decisions, now let's run what the economic model looks like under these assumptions. There may be value in that, right?
Withdrawal.
So ultimately, the dataset that Verdunity puts together would be a component ultimately of the comprehensive?
No.
It wouldn't be used at all?
It stands alone. It is a, if you recall when we talked about this in January at the retreat, you know, there's talking about redevelopment and everything. One of the things we said at that time was, this data you can use to help inform you as far as from a redevelopment standpoint. Here are the trade-offs. If you go in this particular direction, here's what it costs you to provide the services. Here's what the revenues that could be generated from it, right? So you're just more informed. It doesn't mean that you're gonna change your decision one way or the other, but at least you're aware. Because that's one of the things you've told us is, look, when we're making a decision, can we at least have some more information about understanding what the implications are of this? So it stands alone. It is not incorporated into.
Another, another reason I was, you just reminded me, another reason I was a little credulous about their data was that, you know, I get that a lot of cities are in a position where they've, they've built the infrastructure, they haven't touched it since. And now they've got this huge balloon payment coming and it's a real problem. But I think one of the real highlights of, of how well-managed this city has been long before I showed up on council was just the incremental maintenance of our infrastructure, the, you know, I mean, a real, another good example from a budgeting standpoint is the, the, the way we, oh, I forget the phrase, where we, I call it the T and T. Where we.
Capital replacement.
Yes, the capital replacement, where, you know, we buy a $2.5 million hook and ladder, and then we start putting $250,000 in. So 10 years later, or 11 years later, whatever, because we, seems like we use everything well beyond its life cycle and get quite a bit out of it. Then it's not, we're not looking at a $2.5 million capital outlay. We're looking at, you know, another $250,000. And I think that's, you know, the kind of prudence and stewardship that's been shown by, you know, you and your team, Clay Phillips and his team, prior mayors, prior councils in that regard, is why we're, in, in many ways, why we're in such good shape today. So kind of coming at us from the presumption that we've ignored everything and we're looking at this disastrous balloon payment isn't helpful either. Because it has no relevance, in my eyes, to our situation. So, and they should know that before they hear from me. So again, I was, I was a little disappointed in the whole thing.
And Jim, when they plug in those numbers, the graph will tell them that we're not looking at a financial others.
I don't know. Sometimes I think it's more than just an Excel spreadsheet. I mean, I don't know to what extent they've interviewed staff and, and found out. I mean, you know, our infrastructure maintenance, you know, is fantastic. And, you know, we just completed a huge project on that lift station. No one even knows about it because it's behind the charter school. You know, that's one of the more significant projects that we've had. And, and it, that's gonna have a life cycle for many years that we're not, you know, I, so, so much of what is, has been done and is, that is currently being done, that staff is up to, you know, just has avoided. I mean, that's one reason why I believe we don't have all these landmines today is because of the prudence and the stewardship that's been exhibited by prior staff and current staff and prior councils.
Okay. We are running up on the bottom of the hour.
But that was a great speed.
It was really good.
Okay, thank you, Wes. I feel better. But I, I just, I just wanted to say, I just, I just, I'm not sure if they're in touch with who we are and what we are as a city.
Yeah, Mike, I just want to touch on what you said. The, the purpose of this study, this is standalone, you said, for the land use. Is that because, my understanding is, from what we are discussing here, is in the event we lose the sales tax revenue, we need some kind of way to increase the sales, I mean, revenue for the city?
That is not the purpose.
Okay.
What I was saying earlier is just as an example. Let's just say that $4 billion I put out there, whatever. How, how could we, going forward, over time, how could, how could we promote development somehow that would add an additional $4 billion? I'm not saying that's a decision you're gonna make, but what does it look like? And $4 billion could look like a data center. $4 billion could look, I'm gonna close your ears. $4 billion could look like Legacy West. Those are two different types of development that both generate a billion dollars plus of value. That's a decision for this council and this community to decide in the future. Is this something that we would even consider? That's how it would be used, not, other than support whatever information you need to help make that decision.
Whatever decision you make. I'm gonna summarize. It's not gonna be actionable. I, it's not gonna be actionable today. It's gonna be for us to consider and ponder for the future.
That's right. There's no ordinance that's going to be adopted that's going to adopt anything that's gonna be in that report.
So.
To be clear, we are currently budgeting as if we do not have sales tax.
That's correct.
Right.
So, and I, you know, fundamental understanding of who we are and what we're doing.
Right.
Case in point right there. So we will have a, we will have two or three options to sit down with them before, okay, is that me? Okay, are we all good? So we have two agenda items on work session left. Do we want to come back after? Can we put these off to a future meeting?
Well, can I interrupt? D is the railing, which is on the consent agenda. If you want Mike to go through the presentation, he could do it outside.
Well, that was Councilmember Neville's suggestion, so.
And the budget, the question then is, do you want to come back in for the Budget 101, or do you want to push that to the next meeting?
Opinions? You want to come back in and listen to Budget after meeting our?
I'm content to push.
Push.
Next meeting, yes.
Okay, we'll push. All right. The time is 7:29:32. We are adjourned from work session. And we'll start a council meeting when we get out.
Well done, Mayor.
Item number six on our agenda is citizens' appearance. Persons wishing to speak must have signed the register and list your address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to three minutes each. Persons signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberation from the city council due to the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act. We do have four folks that, four, four people that have signed up to speak tonight. My name is Deepak Jayavant. I reside in 670 Windsor Road, Capel. Thank you for the opportunity, mayor, council, city staff. I'm here to represent the estates of West Haven. I'm the president of the HOA. And we understand that an approval was granted for the right turn from 121 to East Lake Drive. We have West, Wingate. Wingate is a road that is pretty close to, it, it, it's before, it's south of East Lake Drive. We have had several close calls and accidents in the past. but also to, you know, have a, a city that we can live in and raise our families and that we can all live together as separate faiths and in communion with Thee. And we ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which expands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for the receipt.
Item number six on our agenda is citizens' appearance. Persons wishing to speak must have signed the register and list your address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to three minutes each. Persons signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberation from the city council due to the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act. We do have four folks that, four, four people that have signed up to speak tonight. The first on the list is Mr. Deepak Jayavant. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Deepak Jayavant. I reside in 670 Windsor Road, Capella. Thank you for the opportunity, mayor, council, city staff. I'm here to represent the estates of West Haven. I'm the president of the HOA, and we understand that an approval was granted for the right turn from 121 to East Lake Drive. We have West, Wingate. Wingate is a road that is pretty close to, it, it, it's before, it's south of East Lake Drive. We have had several close calls and accidents in the past, and we have the similar risk that East Lake has. We had a major accident back in 2021 involving two residents and multiple children. We have requested Texas DOT City multiple times over the past many years. Nothing happened. We request that we have a right turn lane as well, or some way to mitigate the risk that we face there. Traffic exiting out of Denton Tap exit has to cross over three lanes, decelerating coming into Wingate, while traffic from 121 going north into Sand River, and they have to accelerate. They're cutting across, this is intersecting traffic. Our concern with the right lane for East Lake Drive is that the, you may mitigate the risk there, but you're pushing that risk more to south, which is an intersection of Wingate, because traffic exiting out of Wingate into 121 is probably going to intersect with that traffic trying to take that right turn lane. So it is my, it is my humble request that we consider options to mitigate this risk. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments tonight. Our second speaker is Chandravali Basur.
Thank, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Chandravali Basur. I live at 783 Windsor Road in West Haven neighborhood. I have a similar concern regarding the right through lane coming from the Denton Tap, sorry, the 121 into the East Lake Road. You know, as such, you know, we, we are, our two neighborhoods are very adjacent, and we do even share a road between the two neighborhoods. And we are about, our neighborhood is about six times larger than the East Lake. The traffic in and out of Wind, our West, West Haven neighborhood is again, you know, five to six times more than East Lake probably. So already, you know, anybody, you know, coming out of West Haven, you know, say going towards Den, making a right onto Denton Tap, they have to be in the right lane. Anybody preferring go to Frontage Road, you know, continue Frontage Road, they have to be in the middle lane. And anybody going into the Denton Tap, making a left or 121 and south, they have to exit to, they have to enter, go to the, the fastest lane. So there's already so much complication out there in our, you know, all of our exits. So this is gonna cause, cause much more confusion to everyone. So we would like to know how, what, what kind of, you know, analysis, traffic flow was performed by the City of Capella or Texas Department of Transportation. Nothing has been shared so far with, with our neighborhood, so we don't know exactly what they should, you know, how it's gonna be and what complication is gonna arise, and that's the concern we have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Our next speaker is Amri Jain.
Hello, everyone, and thanks for the opportunity. So my name is Amri Jain, and I live on 771 Wingate Road, so it's like fourth house from the entrance. So I moved like last year on this property, and I see like too much issues because it's, it's a like circular kind of road, and you don't see this Wingate coming immediately. So like, it, it's very difficult to like take a right turn on, on that, that entrance because you're coming from, either from the Frontage Road or from the 121. 121 like high speed is the issue, but from Frontage Road like you don't see the, the Wingate Road because it's on the, on the turn. So if there is a right lane and, or, or, or in addition to the right lane, like if there are like some, some extra signs which can help people like, know, like there is a immediate entrance, so that will like hel- help us a lot because it's, I, I feel like it's very risky to take that turn. Like from last couple of months, I am taking like two exits before just to avoid that intersection. So if you can do anything for that, that will be really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Our last speaker is Vinay Bhattia.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity. I'm Vinay Bhattia, resident of 754 Wingate Road, part of West Haven community. I've been living in Capella for last 10 years. I've been driving a car for close to 25 years now. I consider myself a safe driver, confident driver, but when I have to enter Wingate Road or I have to exit Wingate Road, I believe that is the way the road intersects with 121. It's risky when I'm entering 121, there's a blind spot, I cannot see vehicles exiting out of 121, and I have to take a sharp right turn to enter Wingate, creating a chances of hazard or accident, and we have had several accidents on that intersection. Similarly, when I'm exiting 121, and when I say me, I'm representing the whole community, there are other families with young kids, teenagers, elders who live, so when you exit 121, it's not like a right turn, the intersection is not 90 degree, but it's, I'll say, close to 120 or 130 degree. So there are vehicles, when you take a sharp right turn, 120 degree, your vehicle is slow, you always run into a risk that someone coming at high speed from behind may collide with your vehicle, again, creating a risk. Now, I do understand that a right turn lane is being suggested for East Lake, one is our HOA was not informed about the right turn. I'll request that the similar right turn facility for both entrance to Wingate and exit to Wingate be provided at the intersection of Wingate and 121. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Item number seven on our agenda is consent agenda. This is routine in nature and is generally enacted in a single, single motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are on the screen. Council, do we have any desire to pull an item and discuss it separately? Councilmember Nevels.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to pull agenda item B for a presentation, please.
Did you say G?
No, B.
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 All right. I believe we have Mr. Garza that happens to be quite handy to address item B. Mike?
Ooh, great. It's working. Good evening, mayor, council. Thank you for this agenda item we have here tonight. It's called the Denton Tap pedestrian railing. This item is discussion related to item B on the agenda tonight and involves the installation of pedestrian railing along Denton Tap sidewalk down the east side of Denton Tap. This area is located just north of Parkway beginning at the bridge as shown as exhibited on the left, and the, the railing is proposed to extend approximately 550 feet shown, as shown on the exhibit there on the right side. The sidewalk in this area ranges from five and a half to six and a half feet wide, and due to the proximity to the roadway, it can feel, it can feel uncomfortable or unsafe for pedestrians, particularly for students walking to and from the nearby schools. This improvement was requested in response to those safety concerns, and, and we have an existing contractor through our cooperative purchasing agreement who performs this type of work. This graphic here is just a rendering of a section of what the rail could look like. On this rendering, it shows like it's right off the back of curb. It's gonna be inset further into the sidewalk. In this particular section, that sidewalk is about six and a half feet, so we'll move it off the roadway to where there's clear zone space for vehiculars traveling, and it'll leave about a five to five and a half foot walkway in this, in this bridge area. And it does narrow as it goes north, but there'll still be enough spacing for ADA requirements. And so the total cost to install this railing along the 550-foot section is, is $95,641.20. And we believe this enhancement will improve the pedestrian safety along this, this well-traveled route. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any councilmember have any questions for Mr. Garza? Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, mayor. Question. Mike, do you, do you think we need it on the other side as well?
The pedestrian traffic on the other side is not, I say the count is not as high as this east side. The east side is particularly, the, the, the middle school students, the elementary students use this path to walk north and south. And so we've noticed the pedestrian count along that area at the same particular time is heavily traveled, the east side not so much, but there's, there's a smaller section on, I mean, on the west side. There's a smaller section on the west side that does have sidewalk on the back of curb. We don't feel that it's necessary, but it's one that we would keep an eye on. But this, this, this side is more, mostly traveled.
Yeah, once you go further, closer to the Victory Park, right near, near the intersection, Magnolia Park, that area is also narrow. Do you think it will benefit the kids coming out of both school, middle school, and Denden Creek if you put a rail like this there?
We, we will take a look at that intersection as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Nevels.
Thank you, mayor. I just, to address your concerns, councilmember Matthew, so just so everyone knows, I'm the one that brought this up at the, at the retreat, and it really is because you really do see the people travel on that east side of there. Don't see nearly as much travel, you know, living in the vicinity, I know you live a little bit north to there, but seeing all the kids walking, especially from middle school north in the afternoons, majority of the traffic is gonna be on that east side. So, but no, I just wanna say thank you guys so much for bringing this up so quickly. I know we discussed it at the January retreat and getting a project like this put together in just a couple of months. I know it, 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 number one, just great job getting that together, and then number two, you know, it's something that, that, you know, living on this side of town, I see the kids coming out on a regular basis and, and stuff, and, and so I've heard parents talking about safety issues on Denton Tap, so really want to thank the city for being so responsive and, and your team for being so responsive, and want to thank the rest of the council members for being receptive to this idea at the retreat. I know, you know, I, I don't know of any incidents that has happened there, but just that reassurance that we can provide another level of safety to the, to the young people there is gonna be reassuring to a lot of parents, so I just wanna say thank you. Thank you.
All right. Council, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Garza. Appreciate it. Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, mayor. At this point, I guess I'd go ahead and move for approval of consent agenda items A through G.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Nevels? Seconded. All in favor?
Walker, Carol Nevels, from Kamara Matthew Hill. None opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number nine is our city manager reports with project updates, future agendas, and directions from work session.
Thank you, mayor and council.
I'm sorry. I do not have an item eight on my agenda. That is why I skipped it. Hang on a minute.
Oh, I do.
Everybody else does. I apologize.
It's what you, it's what you called out. It's just identified as item.
It's eight, nine, ten.
Oh, okay. Item eight is the city manager report with project updates, future agendas, and direction from work session. Thank you for keeping a numbers guy straight. Mr. Lan.
Okay. We'll try this again. Mayor and council, thank you. Got a few things to report tonight. Want to start off with, on June 24th, we will be holding a council meeting. Because of that, you'll see it posted as a special called council meeting. That is because we have an ordinance in place that talks about, we only have one meeting regularly in June, so that's why you'll see the title a little bit different, so just as awareness. Fire Station Five, the contractor is ready for substantial completion, moving towards getting certificate of occupancy for our official opening in July. The contractor is also at the service center, just about complete with the storm shelter. Structural steel has begun to be erected. Veterans Plaza, if you notice out in the back, they're doing hauling off the dirt, the grass. Electrical and irrigation installations will begin this week. Excuse me. The, y'all recall the water interconnects that we have with the other surrounding communities? This is just an update there. Tele services are scheduled to mobilize this week. Work will begin in Grapevine Interconnect, and then they'll move to the Lewisville Interconnect. Remember, our target was to be hopefully finished before the end of the year, of this, this year. DART continues to work on punch list items, and I know it's inconvenient when the arms are down and there's no trains around, but we appreciate everybody's patience as they continue to do that. The Magnolia Park Trail, the contractor is continuing to install the upper Gabion baskets and the Gabion mattress between the upper and lower Gabions, something that will, our residents need to be aware of, June 13th and 14th, the external facing portals of our systems will be offline during the, during the upgrade of our Munis and Intergov systems. So this impacts permitting, licensing, payments for community development, water bill payments, and kiosk for utility billing. Storm debris collection. We were fortunate the other night that the 80 to 100 mile an hour winds didn't come through, but we did have the previous week, so it seems like May now is the windstorm month that we all have to get used to. From, the city went out, reviewed, saw what was going on out there, and the damage was nowhere close to what happened in May of '24, but the claw truck is coming back, so everybody can be excited and take pictures with the claw truck. On Monday, June the 16th, the truck will make one pass through each of our neighborhoods. Large debris that cannot be bundled should be placed between the sidewalk and the curb and the front of the home. Do not block the sidewalks or roadways. No later than Monday, June 16th. Residents can also cut and bundle small brush and tree trimmings for regular greenways pickup. So I just want to emphasize, one pass throughout the town with the claw truck, okay? So once it's passed your house, it's not gonna come back. One pass means one pass. And then, just to close out, community information awards. Last week, our community information team was in attendance at the Texas Association of Municipal Information Officers Conference in Fort Worth. The team won the Award of Excellence for 2025 State of the City Publication and the Award of Honor for the 2024 Bear Necessities Election Voting Campaign. Congratulations to Hannah, Maria, Sem, and Laura. So we came away with some awards last week, so thank you all. That's all I have to report, mayor.
Thank you very much. Item number nine is the mayor and council reports on recent and upcoming events. We've got several things coming up. First, we have our budget workshops that, it's time to kick those off. The first workshop will be held on Monday, June 23rd, and we're gonna hear from our local nonprofit arts and service organizations that are seeking city funding. City staff will also be presenting details on the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund and other special revenue funds. We really would like to have your input and to help shape the budget and the future of On the news the other night, Metrocrest Services showed up with Tracy Eubanks making a plea for increased donations due to the cut in government funding, and part of that is they're doing a wellness donation drive here at our Cosby Library. They're gonna be collecting hygiene items to benefit Metrocrest. These items help promote health, wellness, and empower to local, and empower local families and seniors in crises. You can learn about, more about the donation drive by visiting the library's website at Then on, our parade down Parkway is gonna be held on July the 4th. Applications are open for the, for vehicles and, and pedestrians and whatever else to parade with us down the Parkway, celebrating Independence Day. Capella families, friends, businesses, sports teams, and other community groups are invited to be part of the parade fun by decorating a vehicle, a bicycle, or by walking along with the parade. There is no entry fee, but a parade application is required in order to participate. Applications must be submitted by Sunday, June 22nd, and the mandatory pre-parade meeting is on June 30th. The parade, as I said, is set for Friday morning, July 4th. Then the weekend before that, we're gonna be celebrating Capella with our party in the park on Saturday, June 28th from 6 to 10:30 at Andy Brown Park East. Come join us for live music, lawn games, our drone show, and a spectacular fireworks show. The Celebrate Capella is a pedestrian-friendly event, and walking is encouraged. You'll find more information about the event, including accessible parking, on our city website, capelltx.gov. I believe the headlining band is the Molly Ringwald's Band, so I'm looking forward to that. And congratulations to all the graduating seniors who call Capella their home. We're proud of your accomplishments and wish you best of luck and hope to see you back in town someday. Item number 10 are public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. The, or do we have any public service announcements? I've got two. The Lions Club will be hosting a presentation by DART on Monday, June 16th at 7:00 PM at the First United Methodist Church Annex across the street, and the public is welcome and invited. And then, in association with the church, Tom Palmer's retirement celebration is gonna be held at the church starting around 11 o'clock on Sunday, June 22nd. Reverend Palmer has been a strong supporter of the council, has been council, has been with the ministry here for about 14 years, and we're going to be very sorry to see him leave. Item number 11 is there was no necessary action from executive sessions, so therefore there being no further business before this body. We're adjourned at 8:01 PM.